Pursuit into Section 841411 in the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Services Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, November 18, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuit into Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the north wall of the Teaching and Learning Center. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance presented by Burke High School, JROTC.
All in. Carrying colors. Forward. Arch. Colors. All. Close. Colors. Present. Arms. Order. Arms.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready. Place. Forward. Arch.
Please be seated. Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you could lead us in the vision emission.
The vision. Every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission to prepare all students for success, out of career and life.
Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Tealyn.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Paul.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Next, we have the OPS Proud Spotlight, and we'd like to welcome Burke High School to the podium.
Good evening. Suffice it to say, Allison Arckfeld has made use of every moment of her high school career. She has been a part of the Student Council, Junior and Senior Senate. She's currently running for Secretary of the Burke High Class of 2025. She's a member of the National Honor Society. She's been a member of the Track Wrestling and Cross Country Teams. She has a 4.2 weighted GPA and has taken numerous AP classes. She's been a volunteer camp counselor and swimming teacher. Within JROTC, she has done almost everything possible, and because of her demonstrated leadership abilities, we selected her as the Battalion Commander for the 24-25 school year. One of the things that most impressed me about Allison was her initiative and her dedication to bringing her ideas to reality. One of her ideas was re-establishing a Raider competition team at Burke. She didn't just say she needed a team, or she thought we should have a team. She recruited and trained the team, and she made it happen. Oh, also, she won first place in this year's our inter year competition as well. She is someone that can achieve anything that she puts her mind to. That is why Command Sergeant Major Foltz and I nominated her for the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross of Achievement, of which she has been selected. Please welcome Cadet Major Allison Arckfeld.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak at this meeting and share my accomplishment. Three years ago, I was a freshman who wasn't too self-confident, didn't know how to lead, and definitely didn't know much about JROTC. Hoping that I would make some friends and have an activity to be involved in, I decided to give it a try. I quickly discovered my desire to do well in the program and be a leader when I experienced the way that those who were part of the battalion staff held themselves. It was my goal from the first week or so in the program to become Battalion Commander. I am now Burke's Battalion Commander. As a senior, I can see how JROTC has increased the confidence I have in myself and developed my leadership skills. I have learned that I can achieve what I set my mind to, whether it's something small like commanding a drill routine, or something bigger like earning the Legion of Valor Award. Earning this award takes hard work. Even when things have gone wrong, I have done my best to push through and make the program fun for the younger cadets. For example, one time, a week before a drill competition, numbers for the team weren't looking good, so I recruited a few new people and had to teach them the drill sequence in a short amount of time. From this, I learned that even when circumstances are less than ideal, we can grow from the experience and have fun along the way. The award requires good grades, volunteer hours, and great success in the JROTC program. I am proud to be a recipient of this award because to me, it's a display of all that I have accomplished and in and out of the program the past three years. This award allows me to step back and see the person I've become thanks to the experiences and opportunities in JROTC. I will carry my leadership skills with me and continue to develop them through this year, college, and the rest of my life. The opportunities JROTC has provided me with will have lasting impact for me, both through memories and the lessons I've learned.
So, well, thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for being an OPS student. Congratulations on all your accomplishments. We'll open it up to, I'm sure we have some questions, colleagues. I'll start at the left. Dr. Holman?
Congratulations. We are so very OPS proud of you. It's clear that you have tremendous leadership skills. Do you plan on continuing through the military route once you finish school? Or what are your plans after high school?
I'm currently applying for ROTC scholarships, and I plan to join ROTC in college.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Head. Congratulations. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. I know it's probably high on your list on a Monday night to come to a board meeting, but we're so glad that you're here. Echoing Dr. Holman's comments, thanks for all that you've done to make us OPS proud. I was going to ask the same question, what you're going to do after, but I think I'll take my second question then. Can you tell us a little bit about the award and maybe some of the, first of all, were you nominated? Did you have to fill out any type of paperwork, write an essay? Can you kind of give us the process on the award?
Yeah, so for this award, I had to complete a portfolio. It included my resume, letters of recommendation, an essay, and some more other things. Yeah.
It sounds like you tackled it well, though, obviously. What a great distinction. Congratulations. And I know that I saw a few people videotaping. If we can have maybe your family all raise hands that's here tonight for you. Obviously, a large part of your success is to impart to your family. So, congratulations. Thank you all for being here. Thanks again for all that you've done to make us OPS proud to receive this award. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paul?
So, you'll have to forgive my ignorance a little bit. I'm not familiar with, like, military ranks or distinctions or anything like that. I see all those cool little things on the breast of your blazer. Could you talk to me a little bit more about what those mean?
Yeah, so these colorful, like, rectangle ones here are ribbons, and those are from doing different activities in the program. Down here, these are medals that I've earned for, well, we get medals like this at the end of the year at an event that we call Awards Night, and those are kind of more based on how we've done throughout the whole year. Right here, those are arcs, and those are also for activities that we've done in the program. Depending on the color of this cord that we have, it represents different things that we've done. And then this cord, the black and gold one, is black and gold for Burke, and every JROTC program will have an officer cord like this, and I have it because I'm an officer in the program.
Well, congratulations. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you, President Head, and thank you for coming tonight. Congratulations. Did I understand that this is your third year, that you're a junior?
Uh, no, I'm a senior.
Oh, okay, because I was going to say, what's left. It sounds like you've accomplished everything. And if you could just explain to me, I didn't quite understand in the introduction that you wanted to create and therefore created a Raiders team? What was that?
Yeah, so the Raider team is one of the many teams that our JROTC program has. We kind of have something for everyone. We have, like, more academic-type things, but our Raider team is an athletic team that we have. We haven't had a Raider team at Burke in a very long time. I had the privilege to go to the National Fort Knox Raider Competition last year with Buena Vista High School, because they were short on people for their team that year because they're new. So then, when I came back, I had experienced how fun the Raider team was, and I decided to start one at Burke.
Is it like the obstacle, military obstacle course we see in the movies? Is that what the competition is?
You could say that. There's a 5K event, lots of carrying heavy weights, obstacles, climbing over walls, flipping tires, mud.
And other people besides you wanted this to happen?
Yes.
Well, that's a miracle. Good job. Great leadership skills to get that team put together and to encourage others to join. And best wishes as you graduate and move on.
Thank you.
Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, President Head. So, I wanted you to know that I am a school board member that did go to your events that you guys have had at the Masonic Temple, you know, when you've had your dance and your program there. The first year, I went with Nancy, and then the second year, I went by myself, so I'm giving it to my fellow board members. And I always enjoyed watching your program and seeing the recognition that you guys have earned, and I just want to wish you the best in your career. But I do want you to know that if you do leave Nebraska with your military career, I do hope that you come back home. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Crackey?
It is such a pleasure to see you here tonight and to have Burke honored in this way because of all that you've done. And I don't even know if you, what did you not get? It looks like you have the full range of all of the things. Did they have other things that you could have done instead of some of the ones that you did do, and you would have had a different kind of colorful badges?
Um, not really. I don't think so. There may be some that I don't have. Oh, there are ones for being involved in musical activities at school, and I haven't had much room in my schedule for that with all my classes in JROTC. So, I don't have anything for the musical activities.
Do you have a study hall?
I do not.
I thought that would be true, because so often, the students who do excel so much, they don't have time for the study hall. They're so busy doing other things. And we really want to commend you and your family for having this beautiful daughter coming here and all of her achievements. Thank you very much. And to the principal, we like seeing him here, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, my question's kind of in line with Ms. Crackey's. So, I thought I was busy. My God, you might be the busiest person I've ever met between JROTC, academics, athletics, everything else that you've been up to for the past four years. How do you keep everything in order? How do you keep yourself motivated to keep going, keep pushing?
I make sure to keep my list of priorities straight. My mom's always told me that school comes first, and I listen to her the best that I can. And then after that, I focus on junior ROTC and other events and activities, like cross-country or sports. I kind of put after JROTC, so if there's an event that's at the same time, I focus on JROTC, but I make sure to let my coaches know.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you again for being here with us. Congratulations on all your accomplishments. We can't wait to see where your career takes you. And if you wouldn't mind, please come by. I'd like to shake your hand and then take a quick picture with you. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next, we have Board Communications. Start at the left again. Anything down there? Ms. Paul?
Thank you. I kind of have a mouthful tonight, so I want to say sorry in advance, but I'm not sorry because it's very important to talk about. So, as we gather on the eve of tomorrow's election, I just want to take a moment to reflect on what's at stake, not just nationally, as we see the presidential race unfold, but also here at home in Nebraska, where we face choices that directly affect the future of our community and our children. This election will bring new faces to our board, as some of our dedicated members are up for reelection or have chosen not to run again. To them, I extend my gratitude for their service and dedication to our schools and our students. For those who will join us and for those who will continue alongside me, I want to reaffirm my commitment to our shared vision and the work that lies ahead. Our mission here at OPS is as ambitious as it is essential to create a nurturing, inclusive environment that prepares every student for a future filled with opportunity, purpose, and success. My priorities on this board remain focused and unwavering. First, I am committed to addressing the school-to-prison pipeline, a complex but vital issue. We know that education can either be a pathway to opportunity, or if neglected, a roadblock. Every student deserves a fair chance at success, and we are duty-bound to dismantle the barriers that disproportionately affect so many of our young people. Transparency and open communication with our community will also continue to be a cornerstone of my work. I believe that a well-informed community is an empowered community, and I am dedicated to ensuring that our families, educators, and community members have a clear, accessible line of sight into our decisions and our policies. That's why I've been working with several board members and our administration to host a series of town halls next year. These gatherings will give us a chance to hear directly from you, our community, so that we can better understand your needs, concerns, and ideas as we move forward together. Of course, improving graduation rates is another priority close to my heart. Our graduation rates are more than just numbers. They represent dreams realized, futures secured, and the pride of families and communities. Every additional student we see walk across that stage is a testament to the hard work of our students, teachers, administrators, and parents. Finally, I want to express my wholehearted support for our administration's ambitious, moonshot goal of having every student on grade level. This goal reflects the belief that our children deserve nothing short of excellence. It won't be easy. It will demand all of us, teachers, parents, board members, and students alike, to reach beyond what seems possible, but together, we can turn this goal into a reality. In closing, I want to say that our work on this board is more than a responsibility. It's a promise to our children, to their families, and to our communities. It is a promise to do all we can to create an education system that supports every child's unique potential, leaving no one behind. I am honored to continue serving, and I look forward to working with both our existing and new members to make Omaha Public Schools a beacon of hope, opportunity, and achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erdnberger?
Tough act to follow. I was going to say that we're getting rid of a lot of portable classrooms, but, which is nowhere as important as what Ms. Paul just said. Thank you very, very much. We, yes, we're getting rid of 10 portables in our consent agenda, which, when added to the 30 we got rid of last year, I think one of the ones we're getting rid of this year has been around since 1968. So, slowly but surely, we are moving into the 21st century. I also am going to describe more later, but last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend a couple of hearings down in Lincoln called primarily by Senator McKinney, and our staff attended and testified, and I'm going to share with you later what a wonderful job they did and how well-prepared they were. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, President Head. I just wanted to encourage everyone, of course, to go out and vote tomorrow because it really is very important, obviously, for our country and our state, and even here at the school board level. And I'm pleased that there are people who want to apply to be and serve on our school board. I certainly have high praises for serving on it myself and would never try to tell someone not to pursue it because I think it's a fantastic opportunity. And I really do hope that everyone follows through, though, and votes because it's really going to be important. I did go to my first football game this past week at Central, and I was so amazed at what a nice stadium that was. And I'm just sorry that I haven't made it to more football games, but I really did enjoy myself. And even though Central wasn't on the winning side, I wanted them to know that I was there rooting for them. And I appreciate all the students' efforts because it takes a lot of time and dedication to participate in sports, too, besides school. And it takes time for the families, too, and I just want you to know that I do appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Ms. Crackey?
I guess I would say something about being on the board. I've been on the board a long time, off and on, and it's nice to be here.
I've been on the board a long time, off and on, and it's nice to be here and try to express what you think is good to do and maybe not good to do and be a part of the organization. I have told everyone, wherever I go, that we have a really nice board. And what's good about it is that it's so varied. Everybody comes at it from a different viewpoint or a different, they are in a different occupation or something. So that's what I like about it because they share, it makes it better because it's wide and varied. And I don't really want our people to leave who are going to be leaving. And we already know some of them who will be coming, and we'll look forward to working with them, too. I just, I value the board members, and I think that all of them are worthwhile and good people. So I wanted to just tell you, is what I tell everybody when I go somewhere, that we try hard to do the best we can. And there have been a lot of circumstances and things for OPS that other people don't get into or don't have those opportunities to work with different children like we do. We have all kinds of programs for everyone. So from the children who are in our handicap program to the children who are excelling like you saw here tonight, and that was really nice seeing what they do in ROTC. I know I've gone to the basement at Burke where they have their ROTC program and see what they're doing there. But all in all, except for the rain tonight, it's always nice coming down here. And I really appreciate the renovation of the boardroom. I think it's just gorgeous. And for anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to come here, come down and see us because it's really nice. And they had to do it because of the wiring and different things that had to be done. So when they did it, they really did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you for coming back to me. Ms. Juarez reminded me that last Friday night, OPS had three high schools in the playoffs, which is the first, as I understand it, the first time in like over a decade that we've had that many. Hello? Have had that many high schools in the playoffs. And I note that they didn't all, they are not all going forward, but it was a huge achievement. And I'm going to give a, instead of giving a shout-out to my home school, I'm going to give a shout-out to the Westview Wolverines. This is the first year that they've got seniors, and they were in the playoffs. And so I just think that's pretty remarkable, and those players and those students really have something to be proud of, that their first year that we've had seniors at that school, they were in the playoffs. So congratulations Wolverines and Eagles and Vikings.
Stealing my school, Jane. Said you're stealing my school. So, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Just wanted to share with the community and the board that I got the opportunity to attend Q this past week and was able to sit in sessions about equity in education, teacher support in AI, civil conversations for stronger teachers, school collaborations with community-based organizations. So being able to serve in those kind of hubs is really important. And even having some of our community-based organizations here tonight, our Cradle to Career Cohort, that strategy is going really well. And it kind of wraps around to, one of the keynote speakers at the conference was Michael Smith. He's the CEO of AmeriCorps, but he started out as the original facilitator of the MBK, my brother's keeper foundation. So just knowing that that work is going on here in Omaha, and we're collaborating with our school board, our district, to make sure that we are a community hub, I think is really important. And it brings a lot of things full circle to know that we're doing things correct and on a national level here as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to quick echo Ms. Erdnberger's comments. No, you're good. You're good. Congratulations to our three schools, Central North and of course, Westview, who made the state Class A football tournament. Had the opportunity to make it to probably half, maybe a third of Westview's games over the past three years. And to make the playoffs your first year in Class A is a huge accomplishment. I know they've grown a lot as a team, and I'm excited to see where they move in the future. So congratulations, everybody. Moving on, we have public comment and recognition. We have three speakers who submitted requests to be heard forms tonight, and the board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know, and one will be provided for you. We understand people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and refrain from applause or outbursts during your presentation. The subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member. We ask that you not identify the student or staff member, instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland, and she will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, Nebraska revised statute 841412 requires any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify yourself, including an address and name of any organ, sorry, identify yourself by spelling your name, address, and any organization you may represent unless the requirements waive for security reasons, which we don't have any requests for waivers this evening. So again, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you're representing any particular organization. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table if you have materials to distribute that let Dr. McFarland know. It is now 6:32, and our first speaker is Justin Riddell.
Good evening. I'm Justin Riddell, J-U-S-T-I-N-R-I-D-D-L-E, 16422 Patrick Avenue. And I have good news, actually, good news for you guys this time, which is I'm going to take a break from coming here because what I've finally proven after this very long time is that when you guys lie, and I see that nobody's looking over here because this is how interested everybody is in the whole situation, but, so maybe I'll speak over here to you folks. I also see that nobody in the community cares about what these folks have done. But I'll just give you a quick layout. They violated some simple things like First Amendments, then they lied, then they had their attorney lie, then the Attorney General lied, then the Ombudsman refused to address it, which those are the people that are supposed to monitor the state, then the judges ignored it, and then the Supreme Court said that we don't want to look at this. Now, for you guys, that doesn't mean anything at the end of the day because I'm going to keep sending the requests to McFarland, who will keep denying them, which it's so simple that I requested the same thing as my mom, and they gave my mom the information and they asked me for $1,600 for that same information. Does that make any sense to anybody? It makes sense to everybody because, now, I don't know if any of you guys saw the podcast, maybe not. It's a small group, but it's hit some buttons already, and so there will be another one coming out. And these aren't produced by me. These are other people on YouTube that have finally decided, or, well, actually, I don't know, they're fighting other battles, what, what, what. A lot of the things that I hear you guys say, anytime you hear the word cohort, it's a bad thing, just so you know. Four years, I've never seen you guys answer one question to the public that's been submitted. Nothing about the books, nothing about the curriculum. Mr. Ray sits over there. He's newly elected, and it's funny because of all the people, I thought, you know, this is going to be a good person for the district, but what does he do? Cost, boy, you got your phone on. Thanks. Can't make this up. So Mr. Ray has been here now, and what has he done? He's done absolutely nothing in terms of helping educate the public on the curriculum or the books or anything like that. He pretends like it doesn't exist. Ms. McFarland, and I want you two to understand, you're the only two, actually, that at this point, we won't get into all that. I'm forgiving all of you because at the end of the day, when you guys, the AG, the Ombudsman, this, the courts, the Supreme Court, when they all try to hide this, what I've proven is a criminal enterprise. And what I've proven is if that's not what it is, then nobody actually cares. Period. How could I come here and embarrass myself, which is what I'm doing? Because if nobody believes me at this point, I mean, these folks have never questioned the facts, neither have their attorneys. What they do is lie. But when I see a new line item that you're paying your attorneys now $400,000 a month to fight me in court, I'm not going to do that to our kids. This is crazy. Well, actually, I am going to do that. Dang. I'm not stopping. I'm just getting, stopping coming because nobody cares. I've got a national audience now, and everybody here and everybody for years. And Spencer, I will vote for you. For some reason, I have ADHD. I thought you lost earlier this year, and nobody pays attention, whatever. But I fear what would come instead of you more than
One minute?
what you choose not to do. So it is what it is because I'm not stupid. Let's see. Yeah, pretty much that's it. I wish you guys well until I see you at your, whatever you just announced earlier, some sort of meeting that we're going, I'll come back then. But in the meantime, expect that I'm not stopping what I'm doing. I'm just stopping being public because nobody in Nebraska cares. That's why the new
Thirty seconds.
They don't care. They're scared. Everybody lies. Everybody's scared. And if you weren't, somebody in this state wouldn't just hide. But they do, and all the court cases prove it. And when you see these new podcasts, I think you guys are going to understand because they make it real clear. And Ms. McFarland and Mr. Ray, good luck because I'm coming for your jobs. The rest of you, take care.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michaela Kazer.
Good evening, Superintendent Ray, President Hatta, members of the board. My name's Michaela Kazer, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-A-K-A-Z-O-R, and my address is 11619 Grand Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. I first want to thank each of you for your efforts dedicated to helping the next generation succeed. And I completely understand that what I speak on every time I come is just a very small part of what you, what you do as a board. So I truly, I appreciate everything that you do, from the finances to making sure that the kids are able to be literate and read. I truly appreciate everything that you do to help the next generation succeed. I am here today because I'm concerned of a sexually explicit book named The Carnival at Bray that is available to middle school students at Morton Middle School. In the previous meeting I attended where another speaker addressed a similar concern, I did receive a phone call from a member of the board saying that the book was removed from the elementary school and that a member of the administration would be in contact with me. I want to thank you for your efforts to address my concerns. However, I do want you to know that no one from the administration has reached out to me, and that was about two weeks ago. I'm concerned that this book is available to middle school students at Morton Middle School because it is a book that describes sexual scenes. The book describes sexual acts to middle school students. I'm concerned because as a member of Generation Z, I do not want to see my generation and the generations after me exposed to harmful content that would shipwreck our entire lives. I am just a 20-year-old girl who doesn't want my generation to fail. According to many researchers, early exposure to pornography is connected to negative developmental outcomes, including a greater acceptance of sexual harassment, sexual activity at an early age, acceptance of negative attitudes to women, unrealistic expectations, skewed attitudes of gender roles, greater levels of body dissatisfaction, rape myths such as that sexual assault is the responsibility of a woman is her fault, and sexual aggression. Early exposure to pornography also increases the likelihood that depression and relationship problems develop. Sexual risks-taking is another common problem associated with being exposed to pornography at an early age. This includes more sexual partners and not using birth control. A study found that adolescents who use pornography appear less socially integrated and more socially marginal. They express less commitment to their families, fewer pro-social attitudes, and less attachment to school. This could be the case simply because youth are so enveloped in what they are viewing and how they feel about it, that they lose touch with the environment and the people around them. Another key issue is that an individual's first exposure and general exposure to pornography may lead to mental health problems, such as depression and anxiety, particularly among adolescents, and that the earlier a child is exposed, the more mental health problems they've, they are faced with later in life. With these statistics being stated, I would like to make a suggestion that myself and other members of the public have expressed. We would like the process of how books are placed in Omaha Public Schools to be made, to be made known to the public. Also, if there is not one already, I would like to suggest that OPS forms a library committee, a library committee, including parents and staff members that review every new book placed in the schools. So this just is to make sure that we know what is available to our students. I am now going to read from the book that is available to middle school students at Morton Middle School. Parents, if you have children watching this with you, I advise that you have them step out of the room due to the explicit content. The book that is available to middle school students is called The Carnival at Bray by the author Jessie Ann Foley. On page seventeen
One minute?
It says, "She woke up once in the middle of the night feverish and saw the shadows of two people moving up and down, Uncle Kevin and the blonde. And the blonde was moving on top of him, and he was holding her breasts in each of his hands like Christmas ornaments. Maggie knew what they were doing, but it didn't look so frightening or clinical as she was learned about it, as when she learned about it during those awful movies in health class. And it didn't look as disgusting as the pornos she'd seen at Katie Grant's house, which was all
Thirty seconds.
spread legs and shaved bodies and smirking plastic faces." And then there's many other parts of the book. There's one that describes, I don't like to say it this way, but it describes a blowjob and then other sexual scenes. So I thank you for your time, and I would be happy to speak with a member of the board or the administration about this.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Ashley Carlock.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to you, board, and thank you so much for your time. My name is Ashley Carlock. That's A-S-H-L-I-C-A-R-L-O-C-K. My address is 6508 North 33rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68112. As I stated in my introduction, I am Ashley Carlock. I am the proud owner of Blessed Are They Learning Center. And I'm here representing as a member of the Cradle to Career Initiative. My company was formed on August 10, 2020, as a sole proprietorship under state law and is headed by myself. I have 18 years of valuable experience and knowledge in early childhood. I have worked as an aide, a lead teacher, a night shift supervisor, a site director, visitation specialist, a paraprofessional, assistant director, and now the owner and director of my own facility. I have held and continue to hold leadership positions in my community as well. I serve as a senior leader in my church home, Church on Purpose. I have served as a member of the Nebraska Early Childhood Collaborative Advisory Council and currently serve as a member of the Nebraska Early Childhood Workforce Leadership Cadre and continue in my education of early childhood and development. Blessed Are They Learning Center welcomes all families but truly focuses on supporting the low-income, single-working-class parents as well as single-working, single-working-class parents as well as essential workers in its community. Our goal is to provide the best care, learning environment, and equipment, developmental opportunities, and supportive and engaging relationships for children in attendance, thus facilitating a space where growth and fundamentals can be created. The lack of peace of mind when it comes to affordable childcare solutions is the problem that we strive to solve. We provide services from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and care for age groups six weeks to 13 years. Having a childcare learning center provides school readiness and bridges the gap. They are the missing piece for children to properly be prepared to enter school. They are the missing piece for children to properly be prepared to enter school. As we all are coming to learn, the infancy to early childhood years, zero to eight, are the most critical phase of human development. This space in a child's life offers the greatest opportunities for learning, movement, and communication with the world around them. This timely juncture is also at its highest potential risk for a child's development. Negative influences can be irreversible. Young children who grow, I'm sorry, young children who have to grow up in more adverse circumstances and environments are more at risk. The Cradle to Career Initiative will bridge the gap and ensure children the opportunity to make gains intellectually, socially, emotionally, and physically. The initiative will also reinvigorate the environment and culture for positive and loving relationships while also providing access to life skills essential for the world we're living in today. Promoting and investing in youth through the Cradle to Career Initiative can help produce successful and purposeful adults who will assist in breaking down barriers, barriers that have caused generational poverty. I joined the Cradle to Career Initiative in order to give voice to early childhood. I desire to be a part of a movement that has a passion to see the success of our children from birth to adulthood. The Cradle to Career Initiative embraces the ability to, to be able to provide support and addresses
One minute.
in the community. Being a part of this collaborative gives my childcare center the capacity to fill the void that children need to be able to foster a growth mindset and a strong desire to continue to want to learn and adjust well once they enter elementary school and beyond. This collaborative helps our children to understand that they do have a future and they also have choices as they learn and progress. I'm excited to be alongside this initiative as well as OPS as we hope to produce future
Thirty seconds.
leaders in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, at this time, any member of the board may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda and be voted on separately. Do we have any motions to remove? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before us?
I move.
Second.
Dr. Holman? Motion by Dr. Holman, second by Mr. Smith. Do we have any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, I do. Item I-8, I need to abstain from, which is Claim C Report for my role on the Omaha Public Schools Foundation Board of Directors. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other abstentions? All right, seeing none. The motion before us is to approve the consent agenda with Ms. Cassidy's abstention to item C or Claims Report C. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foul?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nine-Nine?
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to information items, we have item J-1A, the Accountability Committee update. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. The Board of Education Accountability Committee met on October 24th to begin to identify a timeline to review the superintendent's contract. We recognize that with the election tomorrow, there will be changes to our Board of Education and committee membership in January, so suggestion of the timeline is subject to change. However, we wanted to begin discussion to provide all board members time to review the current contract and consider the process. Historically, the superintendent contracts are executed for three years with the general practice of reviewing each year to potentially consider a salary increase, amending any items or terms or conditions of the contract, or extending the contract. Mr. Ray's current contract is through June 2027 and is available to anyone to review on the Omaha Public Schools webpage. The Accountability Committee proposes a timeline that includes sharing the current contract with board members in early spring for their review, discussing any modifications in closed session meetings, and finalizing a potential, any potential changes with the superintendent by June 2025. Again, we want to stress that the final process is subject to change with a new accountability committee in January 2025, but want all board members to feel they have enough time to review the contract and be a part of the process. Finally, I would like to recognize and publicly thank our current Accountability Committee membership, Ms. Tracy Cassidy, who will be leaving the board at the end of their, her term in December, and Dr. Siobhan Holman, who will continue on the board, and Ms. Mark Juarez, excuse me, who will continue to serve her community. So thank you guys for all of your work and dedication.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, any questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Moving on. Sorry, moving on to action items. Item J-2A, the approval of first reading of Policy 6300.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Policy 6300 is our policy on curriculum, sorry, library materials, instructional materials and library materials. And at our last meeting, as an, when this was on for as an information item, we did go into some depth as to the process for how books are chosen and evaluated, how parents and community members can bring those, any particular book to our attention and challenge those books either with a school librarian, with the teachers or principals, or with the administration and the board. With that, I would submit the motion on behalf of the committee to approve first reading of Policy 6300 and open for any further debate.
All right, we have a committee motion. Doesn't require a second. Do we have any discussion on Policy 6300? All right. In light of our speaker, I'll just ask, Mr. Tealyn, I know we've already had this conversation a number of times, both in board meetings and in the committee, but our speaker had requested that we make public a policy about how books end up in libraries and how to, how to challenge them. That's all covered by this policy, correct?
It covers it in some detail, yes.
Perfect. Amazing timing that we have that up for a vote tonight. So thank, thank you for your work on this. We've, sorry, Ms. Juarez, did you have a? Nope. All right. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foul?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Nine-Nine?
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have item J-2B, approval of the report of the Legislative Committee, including recommended positions. Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Head. And point of personal preference, thank you to our audio team. You might know we haven't had any feedback problems tonight, so progress. Thank you very much. As I mentioned earlier, there were several hearings last Friday held in front of the Education Committee of the Legislature. OPS testified with respect to three separate items. And first of all, I'd like to say that our testifiers, Chief Utterback, Superintendent Ray, and Dr. Holman is looking out there like I don't, yes, all did a fantastic job addressing each of the items that were listed. Chief Utterback spoke to the issue of what the OPS policy is regarding ban and bar. Superintendent Ray spoke to the issue of the impact of having, of size on the achievement levels of a district. And Dr. Holman spoke about how to reduce the achievement gap that is perceived to exist in the OPS district. Not only did they do a great job, but I particularly wanted to give a shout out to the teams and teams of people that prepared our speakers. We were, they were fully prepared, had more information at their fingertips than you can possibly imagine, largely due to the work of Ms. Christopherson, and not in any particular order. It's possible Ms. Christopherson didn't do much, but Ms. Christopherson, Ms. Kramer, Dr. Nero, Lindsay Apple, Vicki Walter Winters, Jeremy Maskel and his communications team, and Dr. McFarland, certainly our superintendent. Mr. Schmidt-Bonney and his team accumulated and presented in the materials that they were using to prepare for the hearing data as necessary to address all of the issues that were brought to the hearing. The next, there are a series of other hearings that the Education Committee is going to be having over the course of the next week. I guess they had a couple today, as a matter of fact, which we are monitoring. One that may have an impact on us is they're looking at selling lands that are currently managed by the Nebraska Department of Education. Currently, that money is allocated to school districts. And it could have an impact on OPS's resources. That is a hearing that's going to be held. Oh, maybe that was, was that today? No, not yet. Anyway, we are, even though the legislature's not in session, I did want to say that our, the Legislative Committee is paying attention to the hearings that are being held and how they may or may not impact OPS and putting together a remarkable team of people, which by the way, also includes Rhoda Fraser. Everybody was pulled into duty as far as I can tell. I'm sorry, Ms. Megan Nasbrosch, thank you too. She's the one that helped me come up with the list. And she did, she was so humble, she didn't put her own name on it. All of these people worked so hard to prepare our testifiers, and I just want you all to know, we're paying close attention even during this off-season so that we can hit the road running when the session starts in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion, colleagues? Ms. Foul?
I was just wondering if I could get a copy of our testimony so I could just understand what was said during the, during the hearings.
I will make sure that somebody makes sure that happens.
Any other discussion, colleagues?
I have the same request as she did. I'd like to. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll make sure everybody gets a copy. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Head. There's some listed positions of recommended letter or recommended testimony. Those aren't taking positions of support or opposition. I'm just wondering what, what prompts that recommendation if we don't necessarily have a position? Are we, is that a recommendation to provide a certain kind of information or?
Yeah, thank you. The structure of the hearing is they hear from opponents and proponents, and we spoke as neutral just to provide information. Specifically, the, the hearing about the size of the district and the hearing about the achievement gap were both identified as Class V district issues. So it was actually necessary that we be there as the only Class V district in the state. I believe the ban and bar was not limited to Class V districts, but it was just a general question about what are the procedures that school districts across the state employ to ban and bar people from their property. But yeah, so that's why all of those people had to work so hard because our testifiers had every piece of information they could possibly want to be able to testify and respond to questions from the committee members that attended.
Thank you.
Ms. Foul?
Thank you. Were we the only school district that testified in the neutral capacity or did other school districts come and testify neutral or did they end up taking a side?
With respect to the two that were only class, listed only Class V in the description of the hearing, we were the only ones, although several people from the Omaha Education Association testified as well in a neutral position. And if I remember correctly, Mr. Owens, who's the president of the SEIU, he testified as well with respect to the one issue about the relationship between size and achievement gap. Everybody that testified on a neutral basis on that one was pretty adamant that there's no correlation. And not only is there no correlation between size and achievement gap, but also the notion of making OPS a different size somehow just opened such a can of worms that wasn't worth going down that path. To be fair, Senator McKinney, after everyone had testified, acknowledged that, that, albeit that was what the title of the hearing was, he said that he did not intend it to be about reducing the size of OPS. So I think that that's not an issue at this point. The other one about achievement gap, again, we were the only ones that testified and some OIA people. The ban and bar, we were the only school district that testified, I believe. Somebody representing, what's that organization? EOC? The Education Rights Council also testified about the ban and bar procedure as employed by school districts across the state, which parenthetically appear to be employed differently than OPS. OPS goes through much more of a structured procedure before we ban and bar, and there is an appeals process. Apparently, that's not the case in all school districts, and that was the point of her testimony. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'll go back and read the transcripts because that sounds very interesting. So thank you for the summarization.
Thank you. Any other discussion, colleagues? All right, seeing none, and I apologize, I should have moved this to an information item earlier since we're not approving new positions. We're just testifying neutral and providing information. We don't actually need to take a vote. So moving on to the receipt of reports, we have one report on the agenda this evening, item K-1. It's the monthly board report for September of '24. Next up, we have closed session. Mr. Smith?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary of the board, chief of staff, and legal counsel pending litigation and legal advice.
All right, we have a motion for closed session. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Foul. Any discussion? Seeing none. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foul?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky? Nine-Nine?
Motion carries. Thank you. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for, for the protection of public interest and the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary of the board, chief of staff, and legal counsel pending litigation and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:04 p.m.
I just want to apologize to everybody about my watch going off. My phone was on silence, but my watch still rang. I don't understand my own technology. I'll work on it. Thank you.